Okay, good evening. It's Tuesday, February 13th. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Rhinebeck Central School District Board of Education Meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. May I have a motion for approval of the minutes of the January 23rd meeting?
Sure.
Second. Any corrections?
I just had some spelling corrections on page one of the minutes, but they're...
Sorry. Okay. Any other amendments, corrections? All those in favor as amended? It's unanimous that motion passes. We have time for public comment, and seeing as we have members of the public here, we invite them to speak. Yes!
Good day. I wanted to extend an invitation to all the board members and to the thousands of people watching this. So, please save the date, Monday, March 5th, from 6:30 to 8:30 at the Rhinebeck High School Auditorium. We will have "The Power of Resilience." At Issue: Kids and Anxiety. The focus is helping you and your child to manage modern-day anxiety by understanding and building resilience for all parents and students, preferably grades six through 12. Headline: With renowned speaker and author Bonnie St. John, she's one of the five most inspiring women according to NBC Nightly News. St. John is a winter Paralympic medalist, a scholar, author, and international speaker and trainer who worked in the Clinton White House and was honored by George W. Bush. Her most recent book, "Microresilience," uses powerful science-based techniques to boost focus, drive, and energy. We'll be discussing how resilience can help with keeping stress from becoming toxic, brain development and the ability to focus, and managing the effects of tech and screen time. It's brought to you by the Rhinebeck Central School District Health and Wellness Committee and the Rhinebeck Science Foundation, and the first 100 attendees will receive St. John's book, compliments of the Rhinebeck Science Foundation. And I just wanted to extend a huge thank you to Dave Aristov for taking the leadership role in this and partnering with the Rhinebeck Science Foundation for the second year of this parent academy. He has identified needs that he sees within the student population, and I give him tons of kudos for bringing this to all of our attention. And we have plenty of room in this auditorium, so please share this with your friends. It's open to people in other districts, and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. That's Jennifer Hamood, the president of the Rhinebeck Science Foundation. Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Okay, so we are ready then for the report from Steve Jensen, our technology integration update.
Want me to do a PowerPoint presentation or...
Yeah, just go ahead.
Where's that?
It's quite a screencast.
Is that a real place?
Okay. Tonight, I wanted to spend a few moments just talking a little bit about technology integration that I know that we'll be talking about in the next slide, but it is a board goal that you have identified. And I just wanted to say that when I started to prepare this report, it kept growing and growing, so I kept having to pare it down, pare it down, because it is a very multifaceted topic, and there's a whole plethora of influences and factors that go with that. So I'm going to try to be as succinct as possible, and there's 19 slides, and I know how that goes, so I'm going to go probably quickly and not cover every single item on every slide. The board had stated a goal, and I took that goal and I broke it down into its three basic salient points. You were asking to look at assessing skills at each grade level, and looking at the efficacy of implementing the technology education standards, and then respond to the gaps that we see in integration. So that was essentially what I took away from that goal and began to build this report on that premise. In order to do that, a little bit of the groundwork, and again, I'm going to go quickly through some of these slides, but the initial tech analysis, some of you have seen or had done back in the audit that was done, I think, four or five years ago now. I broke down some of the samples of the areas cited needing for improvement. There was all technology infrastructure, limited wireless, lack of vision, lack of cohesion, but the last column is probably the most important. There was low trust and limited use across the district, and that was one of the things cited in the report. These are the first of three slides, 19 factors that influence integration. It's not a complete list by any means, but I did want to point out a few as we go through these. Number five and six on this particular slide are particularly important. What we did, and we provided every student with an email address, and that opened up a whole host of opportunities for teachers to communicate with students. And we'd also been using Google Apps. We've been using it for a couple of years, but it relied on private personal emails and no oversight was available. So now we are a Google Apps for Education district, and that's very important because it's for the protection of both the students and the teachers, that everything, that the communication that takes place between the students and the teacher be on a system that is moderated or has oversight on it. And so I thought that was very important, and I think we made a lot of headway in doing that piece. On this slide, the only one that I really wanted to talk about was number eight, which is the integration into the classroom, the reservation system. What we did at the elementary school, and again, these are just highlights, we took the tech integrator who used to be in a lab, and the teachers would come down and drop the students off, and then either stay or leave, and the teacher, the technology integrator, would do the presentation. We've completely flipped that over on his head. And now what happens is because we have mobile technology at the elementary building, we bring the integrator into the classroom, and the teacher is using the equipment and the technology within the classroom, and more importantly, they're beginning to not need the support every single time. So there's teachers who are using these carts independently without the tech integrator and using it on their own. And again, we can go back to the low use and lack of trust in systems. This is beginning to show that we're beginning to break that down. On this particular slide, one of the things that we wanted to do because of the area of security and being able to be safe, I need to emphasize a number 14. We used to have a system here where there were certain individuals within this district that had everybody's password, that knew every student's password, every administrator's password, and that was not good for those people, those individuals, to have those things. And so now everyone owns their own passwords. We don't know what Johnny Jones's password is. We have to reset it, and then Johnny has to go in and reset it back to whatever they want to do. So it's a way of keeping us safe, a way of keeping Johnny secure as well, and so we were able to do that. And the staff has to change their passwords every 12 months. And so about mid-March, I'll get a notification saying I need to change my password, because I have mine set up to go off a few weeks before everybody else's goes off, so that I can start sending out notices and emails saying, "By the way, it's coming," and so it's a reminder to myself. The file library system was another change that we made across all three buildings with the library system. That was a savings of about $8,000 a year by going to that particular software. Maps testing, again, I'm just touching on some of these things. We aren't doing maps at the secondary level, but we're using the web-based platform at the elementary, and there are a couple of other initiatives in there as well. And these are the things that I canvassed very quickly, the K-2 teachers and staff, and wanted to talk about what they're using with classrooms now. And you can see they're beginning to use it on a more sophisticated level. If you recall from the audit that was done several years ago, most of the software was canned stuff. Some of you might remember Oregon Trail, Reader Rabbit, some of those other things that were there. No longer are we doing that. We're using much more online. We're using much more subscription-based services so that we stay current, we stay up-to-date with most of the stuff that we're doing. And so you can see that they're beginning to delve into it, using QR technology, using the centers, utilizing Google Maps, some of those things as well. And again, a lot of this is being done without the integrator being there. So there's an independence that's growing and increasing capacity among the staff. Grades 3 through 5, and you'll notice a change particularly when I go back to K-2. See the number of things that are there? 3, 5. Sophistication begins to rise, the number of projects begin to rise. Some of the things on this are pretty intuitive and are pretty sophisticated in the use of technology. The one that I want to point out particularly is number 16, and that is Google Apps is initiated. One of the things that we were not able to do, and we don't do, we don't give our elementary students an email address because we were concerned about safety for children, and we want to have them do that when they are brought into the middle school. That's when we give them the address. However, we were able to create email addresses for those students that only stay within the Rhinebeck CSD domain. So I can email my classmates, but I can't email a friend outside of the district. So it's only within the district that they can communicate. And so because we were able to do that and contain it there, we were able to introduce Google Apps at the fifth-grade level. And actually, this Friday, part of our professional development day is Google Apps. We're going to look at, we're going to introduce it at the third and the fourth grade level and see whether it's applicable there as well. So there's some exploratory things there. I bring that up, and I only mention this for one reason, and that is because we have Google Apps initiated usually at the sixth-grade level. Well, if we start doing this, and we start pushing that technology and that training down to the elementary, it's going to change the curriculum at the sixth and seventh grade and the middle school. So these things are going to have a ripple effect, and we have to anticipate that going forward, that they will come up to the middle school with a higher degree of proficiency, a higher skill set, and that will allow time to do other things in the sixth-grade curriculum when it comes to technology. So we're trying to release some time that way and be able to use Google Apps at the third, fourth, and fifth grade level. So these are, again, some of the things that we're actually introducing. If you look at number one, cybersecurity concepts. We're actually beginning to teach students about cybersecurity and being safe online. These are things four or five years ago, we weren't even teaching, and we were only talking about them. Grades 6 through 8, I didn't get to go deep dive into this right now, because I know that the major initiative right now has been the incorporation of Canvas and the infusion of Google Docs within Canvas itself. That's been their main thrust, because to do Google or to do Canvas, it takes a lot of work to bring all your curricular material and park it into that software. It's a big lift at the beginning. So initially, it's hard to do, and it takes a lot of time, and that's what they've been doing when they decided last year, the faculty decided that they wanted to adopt Canvas as the mechanism for their classroom management and their curriculum repository software. But it takes a lot of work to do that, and that's been their main focus this time. And I didn't want to get into, there's other things going on, coding, Excel, Google Sheets, Google Slides. Those things are still happening at the middle school level, but I just wanted to really focus in on the Canvas and the Doc at the middle school.
Steve, may I ask just quickly, how many of the middle school teachers are using Canvas at this point?
I don't know if I could give you a number. I know that percentage perhaps, I could probably, I'm going to take a stab at it, probably 70%, 60, 70% in that range right now. And I can talk to John, who can get the exact figure if you'd like.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Grades 9 through 12, I have not canvassed all the departments yet. I've been interviewing. I've had, to date, I think I've interviewed eight of the departments that are at the high school right now, and these are some of the things that they are doing right now, and I wanted to add and provide you later with a more complete list of this, but we've had some two-hour delays, we've had snow days, hamperings, and meetings that we've had with some of the department chairs and things like that. So these are some of the things, and again, these are just samples. They're not all a complete list, but I just wanted to show you that we are beginning to use a lot of stuff that is not just canned software, and that's what we had in the past, a lot of canned software.
Just a question, if you can go back.
Sure.
What is flipped blended classrooms?
Flipped and blended classroom? Yeah, actually, if you want to sign up for the course, we have one on Friday. Basically, what it is, is we took a project, and it started from the high school math department, where we bought a program called Camtasia. It's a software, it captures the image on your screen and records it to video, because it was a video file. So I could teach a math lesson completely on my screen, talking and narrating my voice, and they'd listen to it, similar to Khan's Academy, if you've ever had a chance to look at that. But so basically, what they're doing is they're giving those video clips to the students, and that's their homework. So they're flipping the classroom, in other words, lecturing's happening at home via the technology, and then they come in and they do their homework. And I'm giving you really rudimentary definitions, but then they do their homework in the classroom, and the teacher can go around and begin to target and differentiate instruction within the classroom. And that is a flip. A classroom that's totally done that way is a flipped classroom, but they're doing what's called a blended classroom, because they still are doing lecturing, they're still doing those, some of the more traditional ways we deliver instruction. So a blended is a mixture of that. A flipped is a totally, almost online type of course. And actually, that's what the secondary is doing this Friday, is the entire secondary is looking at Canvas and the flipped and blended classroom. Gathering data, these are some of the data points that I'm collecting to look at integration. We can look at the grade levels, and again, you have these slides, but we did have a case study done on how the elementary uses the SAMR model. SAMR model, if you recall, is substitution augmentation, modification, and redefinition. How we use it, it's a very, it's the sliding scale, if you want to call it that, of how you use technology within your classroom. We look at trouble tickets, even as granular as that. Where are we having problems? Maybe it's with a certain access point in a certain room that's causing problems. We need to address that, and maybe that's for tampering the teacher from integrating technology because they don't trust them. Just use that as an example. We also have established technology advisory, or educational technology advisory committee teams at the elementary and secondary level. So we're getting a lot more input from teachers and working on having meetings where we talk to each of the buildings and get the information from them, again, being the teams of departments, and superintendent's conference days, even so much as taking the evaluations of the courses that they've taken and analyze those, and we get to extrapolate data from that.
Steve, on the E-TAC, you say they're constituted and working now?
They're constituted. We've had, so far, we've constituted them late fall, so we've had one meeting, I believe, with all of them, and then we're going to have a second one here very shortly, probably end of February, early March.
Am I incorrect in remembering that you were going to try to have some parent representation on them?
Yes, we want to have a parent.
You don't yet.
Well, not on that. We would like to have a parent and/or student, but I also don't want to mix up the smart bond committee, which does require a parent. We have that there, so that we have to have.
Right.
But for this, we don't, but we would like that. Future planning, and this again is just a 35,000-foot view of where we're looking at investing our technology budget, and you'll notice the note there, it says, "Based on current funding levels and support, analogous to your rollover budget that you work with." I'm working basically on a rollover budget. For the remainder of this year, we have some additional carts and mobile technology cited for the high school. They're fighting over their carts right now, and there are also some logistical issues. For instance, cart one, I'll just use that as an example, cart one is located in the 140 wing first period, and I've signed it out for second period, and I'm in the 100 wing. I'm not going to make it. I'm just not going to be able to go to the 140 wing and get that cart up here. And so we have, it's a logistical problem, it's not a technical one, it's just simple logistics, and teachers won't use that or are really struggling at, you know, oh, do I got to go down and get that? Can I get it? They've even, some teachers have even said, "I'll meet you at the library." You know, so if the teacher has it, we'll great meet, and then it's dispersed. So we have to address that issue there so that we can maximize the use of the technology. As I'm going through, I'm asking the departments for their requests, particularly at the secondary level and the high school, there are particular needs that are required by certain departments. The art might have other things. It might not just be laptops. It could be probes or accessory equipment, Wykam tablets, for example, if you're in the art program. Things of that nature, that the music department with notation software and things of that nature. I'm just pointing out some examples. So we're going to look at the department requests. I don't have that list completed because I haven't completed my canvassing of the departments, but I should have that very shortly. Then, if the department requests are satisfied in that year, then we're going to look at the whole district in 19 and 20, and look at the density and look at where our weak spots are, if we have any. We may say, well, hey, third grade, you know, or fourth grade, perhaps even fifth grade, might need more additional technology, or the middle school, because they've gone all Canvas, they might need some more. And then by the time we get to 2021, you're already beginning to look at a six-year cycle to start going back to the middle school when we originally bought the first mobile cart. And so we have to look at that. What is not shown on this slide, and we'll get to this when we get to the budget, is the infrastructure that also has to be purchased during this time. We still have a network that has to be supported, servers that have to be maintained, DC controllers, those kinds of things that are behind the scenes, that aren't seen in the classroom, that are supported by this same budget that I'm speaking of. And here is, and again, this is a 35,000-foot view, but we have, for the technology department, we basically have, for equipment, we have two budget lines, and that is our leases, which account for about $165,000 a year, and equipment, which is $15,000 a year. The leases are a three-year lease, so what you're seeing there is basically that 165 divided by three is what we're infusing every year, but because we have these ongoing leases, we have to budget for the remaining years on the leases, and so it comes up to 165. I personally believe that it's the best way to support technology. It keeps it consistent. As leases are done, you know that you have a replacement cycle, you have a way that you know that you already are committed for at least two years of it. What is very difficult to do is to have a budget where it fluctuates all over the map, because what happens is, let's say in year one, you have a billion, I'll just use a grand number here, a million dollars, and in year two, you have nothing. Well, that's okay, you can survive, but in year six or seven, now you have a million-dollar equipment gap because you need to replace that million dollars you had here, and so now you're saying, well now, and so you end up with this sine wave of, you know, needing money some years and other years you don't, and it really becomes very difficult. So the more consistent you are, let me bring an analogy up. If you had, you all know, you get Title I money, Title II, all those things. Imagine those fluctuating astronomically, you know, by 50% one year, 50% reduction one year, and then it goes up by 60% the next year. You couldn't run a program. You couldn't run a program doing it that way. So leases really help out evening out that support system. And then equipment, basically, as an example, when things break, that's what we use this for. And for other things, the other thing we use that $15,000 for is to try out new technology. The screen you're looking at right now is an example of the expenditure from that $15,000 because we wanted to take it and bring it into the library. And we have people, because we thought this would be a nice arena by which it could be exposed to teachers and seeing whether they liked this technology, because we knew that we have to address our presentation technology across the district, has its aging infrastructure using the old projectors.
Just one thing they had about that, too, is when you're talking about leases, from the beginning of the process until it gets deployed in the classroom, by the time of receipt, it could be five, six months. It's a long period. So what's nice with the equipment money is something's broken, we can't wait five or six months to put in a lease or something, we can just go out and get it. So that's why there's two separate lines, you know, so.
Now, the other thing, and this is a conversation Tom and I had last week about leases and money, he had quite a nice spreadsheet that shows going out several years, weeks, on an Excel spreadsheet. We were, at least I was, maybe Tom was, but I was astounded by what a change in interest rate would do to a lease, and it was staggering what a percent would do, going from 1% to 2%. It was $20,000, you know, on a lease aside. Again, that lease, that interest is divided over three years, so it's roughly $7,000, but that's an impact. And so we're at a point right now, do we purchase, front-load our leases a little bit to take advantage of the, because the rates are going up, as far as I know. I mean, I'm not in finance, but that's where the pressure is. And every point that that goes up or a half point, you're losing money, you know, when you go to borrow. So it's something we have to consider and something to keep in mind. So out of that $165,000 and the $15,000, this is what it supports. It supports all student technology, all the faculty technology, all the support of the secretarial staff, guidance staff, all of those things, counselors, all the presentation technology, the entire backbone, the network infrastructure, and printers. So that's a big ticket right there. I mean, not printers. Actually, printers is one of the things I don't like to spend money on, and what I've been doing for the past three years is there's a program called CREATE. And CREATE is where public institutions, court houses and things like that, when they get rid of their equipment, they can offer it through this program to public schools. And so I've been supplying the district with printers from this program, and I think I'm up to about 35 printers, I think I've brought into the district. Haven't cost us a dime, you know, saving us money, because I don't see any educational advantage spending money on printers, because whether it's an old one or a new one or whatever, it's just a piece of paper at the end of the day. And so I try, that's probably the area that really irks me to have to buy anything or to spend money on is printing, because I can try to save money. However, we're coming up to challenges, because people now want to print off iPads, they want to print off their phones, and all of that requires a wireless printer, you know, a much more modern printer. So those are challenges that we're looking at right now. Right now, if somebody wants to do something on an iPad, they can do it, they can send the file to a computer or to their Google Drive, they go on, log on to a computer, and then print it. It's cumbersome right now. So these are the challenges that we have, but, you know, again, we try to save money where we can, and I think we've saved, you know, probably $10,000, probably on printers, I don't know. I'm just guessing at that point. I say all of that because when you look at the center circle, that's integration, but these are all the factors that affect it. Capacity, equipment, fiscal resources, curriculum, direction, innovation. I'm going to talk a little bit later about capacity. Equipment, again, if the equipment is bad, you know from the cell audit, if it's bad for infrastructure, nobody trusts it, nobody uses it. So you've got to make sure that things are stable, and that was one of the things that Joe had really emphasized when I first came here, was we need to restore trust in technology. You know, he just kept repeating that like a mantra to me, to say, "We need to make sure that that happens," and a lot of that has to happen on the back end. So we've spent a lot of time building the back end of things and getting things so that they can work properly. We've talked to fiscal resources, that's just a reality that we all deal with all the time. Curriculum, we've been spending time in the summer, Marvin and I have been working on approving projects where tech integration is part of the curriculum, and we've asked them to pay attention to that. As a matter of fact, this year, this past summer, we spent some time having our tech integrator meet with all the grade levels at the elementary and talk specifically to that issue within their curriculum. Direction and vision, again, that's something that we talk about using the E-TAC, and again, it's not a decision I make, it's a decision that's a shared decision involving teachers, involving the committees, and seeing what the latest research says, and I bring that to the table. Innovation, and I think that's one area I think that we excel at. We allow teachers to try things, and I know full well that when you do that, there's nothing wrong with trying something and failing. And so I know that going in. We always don't have to hit a home run every time you go and you try something. So I don't mind when people stretch themselves. One of the things that Marvin and I did, went to Scarsdale. Scarsdale offered a grant program to their entire faculty. They had some money set aside, and they went out and they said, "We want this to be totally for innovation, research, and development," and they said at the very beginning to the public, "And we know 50% of these will fail. We know that." nothing wrong with trying something and failing. And so I know that going in, we always don't have to hit a home run every time you go and you try something. So I don't mind when people stretch themselves. One of the things that Marvin and I did, went to Scarsdale. Scarsdale offered a grant program to their entire faculty. They had some money set aside, and they went out and they said, we want this to be totally for innovation, research, and development. And they said at the very beginning to the public, and we know fifty percent of these will fail, we know that. But because they wanted the teachers to push the envelope, they wanted the teachers to try things and step out on, you know, so many times, there's funding sources out there where only if it's a safe bet, am I going to do this? And, you know, I've got to have a success here. Sometimes that doesn't always happen. And so I thought it was really a bold move on Scarsdale's part to say, we don't expect half of these to work, because it pushed, again, it's pushing the envelope, but it also gave, empowered the teachers. It empowered them to say, okay, I'm going to try this. And again, in doing that, even though maybe the project failed, the capacity of the teacher increased. They learned things, they learned how to research things. And we're seeing some of that now in the curriculum that we're receiving. Some of the challenges, and I'll briefly go through this. I don't have a PD budget per se. I do have superintendent's conference day one day a year, usually held in February. Looking forward to this one, which is this Friday. Would like, we only have a point four integration specialists across the district right now assigned at the elementary school. Consistency is a bit of a problem with some teachers across, whether it's across a grade level or across the curriculum, we have to look at that. Tech days, that was an experiment that I tried that did not work. Basically, what I would do is I set aside, I call it Tech Tuesdays, at the elementary building, for instance, this is like two years ago, and I would clear my calendar, so I was in my office, and I let the staff know that I was available for any questions regarding technology, you want to come in, I was working in my office, but you could come to me and we could talk about your particular thing, how to do X, Y, and Z, how you felt technology was going, all those kinds of things. And it was a low participation, I wasn't getting a lot of response, so we stopped that. Gen Yes program, I won't get a deep dive into this, but basically, it's a program that's used in about twelve hundred school districts across the country. It's about using students as helpers and helping faculty and helping in touring. They call it a TAP program, it's Teacher Assistance Program, where a teacher would say, hey, I would like to learn how to use audio in my PowerPoint, or whatever it happens to be, and they would tap a student, and the student would come and help them do that. And for various reasons I won't get into now, that was not adopted. And then there's access to technology, and I explained a little bit of that, the carts in the one forty wing, and we're trying to get to the one hundred wing. So there are challenges that we have that are primarily, the access is, a lot of it is logistical. So what is the plan to close the gaps that we might see? Well, in order to do that, we know we have gaps, but we don't know how bad they are or, you know, how little they are. So what really has to happen here is like work, grade by grade, department by department, go in and have to meet with them, and this is what I'm going to be doing between now and the spring, is meeting with the grade levels and teams and departments ongoing, but now formalizing it. And that's the second circle that you see there, identifying the gaps. In other words, formalize those things and say, okay, at the third grade level, we're missing X. At the fifth grade level, we're missing Y. At the seventh grade level, this is happening. And identify that. And prepare a gap report with strategies to resolve those things. Now, they're not going to be resolved overnight, I'm sure, but it's really formalizing it. And then targeting the support for those people. And I'll just, I'll use this as an example. Four or five years ago, at the elementary, they used to go down to a computer lab, scheduled on Tuesday at ten o'clock, I would go down there, and we would try to make sure that we would use that tech integrator while you're meeting with all the second grade teachers. Well, maybe we don't need to meet with all the second grade teachers, maybe we need to meet with one or two of them that are struggling with implementing math or science or whatever it happens to be, and using the person in a more targeted way to support that individual or that grade level that might be struggling with the utilization of technology. So we want to be able to do that, and whether it's supported by a person or supported by professional development, we have to look at those things, but it depends on what the problem is. Obviously, the solution's going to depend on that. So, and then obviously, review and evaluate and adjust as appropriate. So what I'd like to present to the board at a later time, whether it's just through a board update or whatever, that gap report, to show you what it is that I'm seeing and what mitigation strategies will be. And then we can review that and see how successful we are with that, and adjust and revise and move on.
Can I ask a quick follow-up? Do you have sort of a rough timeline in your mind for when you want to aim to?
I would like to do the gap report by the end of April. That would be my goal, if I can get to that.
Is that just CLS? Is that going to be?
No, district line.
Or district.
District line, yeah. Meeting the gap, and seeing where we need to help. For instance, when I've been meeting with the departments at the high school, my meeting really is based on three questions. You know, what are you utilizing technology for now? What are your barriers? And where do you want to help? And those are the three things, and from that, I'm getting a clearer picture. And obviously, I'll have to drill down from there a little bit deeper, get a little more granular, but hopefully, we can extrapolate from that everything that we need to be able to come up with remedies for some of the, some of the gaps may, are perceived, some of them are real. You know, we're going to find that, I'm sure, throughout all of this. I want to show you this slide, and this is probably the most important slide, I'm probably not going to read anything on it, but I just wanted to bring you back to that self-report. And there was a comment in it that stuck out in my mind, and I just went, wow, when I read it. And it was that there was resistance on the part of the staff or faculty, I'm not sure exactly how it was worded, to use email. If you recall, there was a comment in there about the difficulty of implementing emails in this, in the school district. Every one of those courses, with the exception of one, is done by a Ryan Beck staff member, taught by a Ryan Beck staff member, you know, researched by a Ryan Beck, who stood up and said, I want to teach GarageBand, I want to teach Excel, I want to teach this. That, to me, is a quantum leap from that report, from the self audit. That tells me we're making progress. And I mean, that's what I take away from it. I don't know if you do. The only one that they did not teach was cybersecurity overview, and that was one that I taught last year for support staff on that particular topic. But each one of those is coming from them, and matter of fact, this Friday, the entire secondary is being taught by our own staff. The elementary is being taught by a couple trainers coming from DC Bosse's, and that's okay, too. You know, I'm not saying that that's wrong, but what I'm saying is, you're seeing increased capacity here. You're seeing increased performance by teachers, increased interest by teachers to do things in their classroom that they've not done before. And I think that that is a pretty impressive thing to say about the staff here. So what are the results? I think the gaps are closing. I know that there are gaps, and we're going to have to do better at closing those gaps. But integration is really a matter of changing culture, because there's not enough money and there's not enough time and education, I've been in this business for thirty years, to meet all those needs. The analogy that I often, I often think of is, the military spends about thirty percent of its time in training its personnel, just in training its personnel. To draw that over to the educational side, that would mean, we have a hundred and eighty days that we teach students. That means we would need an additional ninety days for training, and that's just not going to happen. We don't have the resources to do that. So where does that training come from? And where do we get, how do we raise that capacity? And that's by teaching teachers how to be self-directed learners, how to be the ones that actually step out and try things. Let them try, be innovative in an area. And, you know, again, as I've mentioned before, it may not be successful, but if they try it and they're empowered, they'll begin to take the ball and carry the ball. We have to surprise, provide the underpinning to help them along that, but it really has to come from them. And really, it's not a top-down situation. When you talk about integration, it really has to come from the ground up. Now, there are some factors that begin to affect that. When integration is starting to increase, then the higher demand for technology, and you see where this is going. Demand's becoming more sophisticated, and teachers are asking, and departments are asking for exclusive use of technology, which to me is a great problem, because it shows that they want to use it, they want to really bring it into the, bring it into their classroom. And we're trying this now. I just added this last line because we've had some discussion about the utilization of technology and what technology to buy, and platforms and things like that, and should we buy cheaper technology, or do we stay with some of the more expensive technology? We have a cart, now just use this as an example, that's underutilized, it's a PC cart, came out of this library this past year, not being used a lot because it's got low memory in it, it's a little sluggish, you know, students aren't as responsive to it, all those kinds of things. So I started researching, and Michelle and I began to do that, and it was going to cost about two thousand, twenty-five hundred dollars to upgrade the memory to bring them up to stop, to bring them up to that level where they could be used a little bit better. But we changed direction, and we moved the other way. We went with a very lean operating system, stripped down the computer, and we did this, and we presented it to a teacher at the high school, and it basically created a Chromebook out of it, essentially. It's just a web browser. And we're hoping that this satisfies the needs of the people in that department, because that department doesn't need a highly sophisticated machine, they just need a web browser to go on and do, you know, standard composition. Our class might need something much more sophisticated because of the type of discipline that they're teaching, use it the same way. But in this particular class, they just need more processing skills, because they're really working on building their writing skills and using Google Docs to do that. So we want to take older technology and redeploy it, so that we're not spending, I'm not spending two thousand dollars on memory upgrades, but I'm using it in an area and towards a department that can use it, and it satisfies all their needs. And that's the hope, and we're going to hopefully do that this next week and deploy those out to that department. And so, so these are things that we're trying to do, we're trying to be consciously know that we're in tight budget times, we know that things are tight all over. And so we try to be as fiscally responsible, you know, because we have fiduciary responsibility to our community and to our schools and to our students, but to also provide them what they need to further their education. So again, you know, when it comes to integration, I think, you know, it's messy, it's wheely, it's difficult, it's hard, but when it comes from the ground up, it's a better way of doing things. It's a better way, I'm not coming in and just imposing this program, and these are the five steps to this and the seven key steps to that. It's not that, it's coming from the teachers, and it's coming from them. And again, I think that the staff at Ryan Beck have really responded well to that, and I'm really proud of the staff here, because they've really stepped up to the plate in a lot of areas, a lot of ways, and so credit to them. So I don't know if there's any questions or discussion, but we'll provide, like I said, you're going to get a report probably at the end of April or so, and give you a brand of enterprise, give what's going on in technology.
So, thank you. This was a great overview. I want to get back to the budget and the money and the increased demand for technology. So how are we, as a district, going to meet the need? You know, the cell taught it was five years ago, right? And it's been slow to bring on the hardware. We had a long-range plan, there have been bumps in the road in terms of fulfilling that plan, but we're, it feels like we're at the tipping point, right, where we actually need more machines. We can't be running carts from the one forty wing to the one hundred wing. So how many carts are at the secondary level? How are we going to, with just fifty thousand dollars for equipment expenses and leases, how are we going to buy the equipment we need so that the teachers can deliver the curriculum that they've been spending so much time writing?
Right. Well, we're doubling the number of carts this spring, doing that, and then beginning to address department needs beyond that.
So doubling the number of carts?
We have, right now, the high school has two Mac carts, we call them Cart One and Cart Two, an underutilized PC cart that we're, I just explained, we're stripping down to the Chromebook level, web browser level, and a smattering of iPads, you know, around, but they're not in a cart necessarily. So the mobile carts essentially are the, I may have missed one, but I don't think I have. And then we have mobile technology within this room. We have these computers in the back, the desktops, and then a cart in this area as well. So we're going to double the use, or double the number of carts, and that may alleviate a lot of pressure, you know. Now, we also know that each of the classrooms have a certain number of computers in them that are aging. And the question that I need to, and I don't have the answer to this yet, is are the four computers used in room one oh four being utilized or are they collecting dust? Now, in one oh five, they might be used every day, in one oh four, they might not ever be used. I don't know that yet. And that's something that by department, by department, I have to, you know, do that and make that assessment. And then if we address the department needs in the following year, then that plugs a lot of gaps that are in the, for instance, I just met today with Emily, because special ed has certain needs, they don't, they don't meet in groups of thirty, you know, they meet in much smaller groups, so a cart does not accommodate them at all. So we have an entire population of teachers and students that aren't being addressed by using the cart. What they're doing right now is, because carts have thirty computers in them, not all classes have thirty kids in them, so what they're doing is they're trading, they, you know, they'll take three from this cart and two from that cart, and that, they're doing that kind of thing right now to support their programs.
Does that happen between buildings, though? I mean, I'm wondering in terms of the elementary school with changing demographics there, if any resources can be redeployed to other buildings.
I would say right now what's happening is, because of the drop of the, you're talking about the population?
Yeah.
So the drop in the population, actually, it's easing the pressure that still exists there.
Already there, yeah, okay.
And so we, when it comes to the replacement cycle, we may not have, or actually, the year that we talk about the density, the density, the density factor, we're going to do that, we may not have to do that in the lower grades, we may not have to address that piece there, but we might here.
So it could be a windfall in terms of being able to redirect?
Right, exactly. So again, so we try to redeploy things, but again, it's, we, I want to make sure that we cover all the bases and all those special area needs, and, you know, the needs of those students and the discussion I had with Emily. They have issues there that they need to be addressed. So it's catching those little areas that only need two or three computers, that the carts aren't answering, at least not efficiently, and then hopefully, we can do that, close that gap as well. Hope that answers.
Thanks. Well, so you feel like the money that is in the budget is enough for our needs right now, and we're not going to have?
At this point, I would like to, as I have mentioned to Tom several times, I'm trying, whatever that number is, I want it to be, more so, I want it to be consistent. To me, consistency is more of a factor than, because again, anytime I see a dip or a major drop in something, I know five years from now, there's a headache waiting out there for a future board that we don't want. And what's going to happen is, that's why, what I fear about the smart bond, the issue where districts are giving, oh, I'm going to give Chromebook, or whatever, I'm going to give a one-to-one to everybody, where are they going to be in five years? And a million dollars?
Nothing to support it.
It's not supported anywhere, there's no bond sitting out there waiting to be used. And so, but that's what I'm trying to avoid. And so if I can do it, where, and again, with the hundred and sixty-five, the balance I'm trying to achieve is roughly eighty, twenty. Eighty percent is classroom technology, twenty percent is infrastructure, behind the scenes, you know, making sure our switches are up, their routers, their servers are done. Right now, we have, one that's moving out there right now is a twenty-four thousand dollar server that we have to replace, it's coming to end of life. Where do I pull that money from? It's going to come from the lease, whether it happens in the density year or the year where we do the departments, that's what we have to look at. So not everything is always out there just in the classroom, there's a lot that's happening with that.
I want to make one clarification, because you said about fifty thousand dollars in purchases. It's actually a hundred and fifty thousand a year. These are three-year leases, so we're actually, about a hundred and fifty thousand goes towards equipment every year, but we pay only a third a year. So we're purchasing about a hundred and fifty thousand a year, and then there's the admin fees, and then there is the interest fees that go with that. So about a hundred and fifty thousand. What we're trying to do is try to even it out so that, like you said, there isn't those dips and everything, because actually, we have a number, we have a big lease that's coming off. It's actually freeing up quite a bit of money for what we could purchase during this year, because the bill's not going to come due to next year.
Right.
So that's something we're going to talk to finance committee at some point in the future.
Right, and that's where the discussion of the interest rate came into play.
Right, yeah.
It's amazing how much it went up.
It was staggering to me.
Because the last time they went out the file for our last lease, we got point seven percent, you know. But, you know, that's all the school districts, it's all done through on the island where they go out and they borrow, I don't know, twenty million dollars to purchase for all the school districts that month. school districts that month. But, but we see the interest rates are starting to creep up, as you all see, and I just played with and changed it to 2%. I was like, holy cow, look what happened, just at 2%. This is going from .7 to 2%. I was like, holy cow, you know, at $150,000, you can't purchase $150,000. Now you got to purchase $140,000 because you're losing that money towards the interest. That's what we want to try to avoid if possible in the next couple of months. So we'll, we'll get into that finance committee and come up with a plan to try to maximize those monies for next year.
Thank you for clarifying.
So we may be looking, just to let everybody know, we may be looking to go out for a lease before the budget comes up because it's, it's, the money's available. We never came close to maximizing the amount this year. So, but we have the ability now to go out and maximize and move forward and have every, hopefully, whatever we get now, isn't going to be in place before the end of the year. That's just, like you said, it's a, it's a good four or five month process. So anything we purchase in the next couple of months, we'll be ready for September 1st.
It would come out of this fiscal year though?
No. It'll come out of next fiscal year because by the time everything comes together and payments are starting to be made, it's July.
Okay. So finance, we'll?
Yeah, we'll discuss.
Can I ask another question, Steve? Going back to, thank you so much for keying everything in this presentation into the district goal because obviously we're at the sort of, we're past the mid-year point and we evaluated our progress towards our goals. And one of the things we called out in the way we formulated the goal is that we want a focus on assessing skills at each grade level. So you've talked about working with departments and across each of the grades. Is there some thought about what mechanism you can use to assess student learning?
Sure, sure. Actually, the one that is still being used primarily across school districts is the ISD standards.
Okay.
That's the one that's being used. Marvin and I are having discussions about the P-21 performance standards. They're a lot thick, they really dovetail, a lot of overlap involved in that. So we're looking at that because there's some resources, particularly in that, with that organization, that are unique, that I'm liking, should say that, so we wanted to begin to look and see whether that helps. But the staff has been familiar with the ISD standard. I mean, that's even decided that they were doing it five years ago. So, so we'll start at that as a starting point, but it may involve, the mitigation plan may involve us incorporating other standards and other goals. And the ISD standards have, they used to have performance indicators, every third grader shall know X, Y, and Z. They've gotten a little more broad in like six general areas, you know, creativity, innovation, you know, problem solving, those kinds of things. They kind of made broad areas rather than these individual skill sets. But a combination thereof is what I think is what they're trying to achieve because they did not abandon those performance indicators. They kept them, they said, no, but look at that under this umbrella of these six major skills.
Do you have other questions, comments? Thank you so much. This is extremely helpful to us.
Thank you.
All right, it's time for our 2018-19 budget development update.
Great. You got your budget books tonight? And so you'll be able to take a look at those things, but I believe at your seat in the package, I'm not sure, I mean, mine were here, I'm not sure if they're in.
Are they in the pack, are they on binder?
I don't know. If you, take, take a look at your, your.
I don't have any.
Could you give it to me?
What is it?
It's in the books, it's in the books.
All right, I just wanted to say, because mine somehow was here and I don't know why mine were here.
Are we in second draft?
So we're in second draft. So if you would go into the budget booklets, go to your second draft there. And what I'm going to do is introduce Christine Natoli. And what I want you to look at first is to go through the additions and deletions. So that should be, if you go to the end of the draft of the budget, which is one through, page one through 18, there should be the development process. So you got a paper clip on yours, okay? So that's where I want to begin with and Christine is going to go through the changes that we have done to the budget since draft number one. So we've put some time and effort into it. We've gotten new, we've gotten the BoSIE figures for the most part, so there's some changes to that, but I'll have Christine go through it and if you have questions, please ask and we can help fill in any blanks we have.
So the additions to the first draft, we have $13,000, $13,000 to BoSIE services and that is due to the need of changing the, or getting, implementing new accounting software in the business office, forecast file, and then we have a trans union program that we will show up. Another addition is a small one. Do you want me to do this line by line or just do the larger ones?
I typically did somewhat larger ones, anything over a, eh, $2,000 typically. Yeah, because there are some small ones here. I don't want to waste people's time with some of the small ones.
So we have an increase of $5,000 in instructional salaries for mentors and this is due to retirements and/or lead replacements that occur during the year. So there's an increase there. There's also an increase in tutoring services of $5,000 and that's providing tutoring services for increasing needs of our population here that are ultimately required in a special end in our program for those particular students. We also have an increase of about $14,500 and that is due to retiree, which is on our individual plan and that is changing to a family plan because we don't know at this point what the individual who's replacing that retired person will have. So total increases right now is $37,000.
So on the health insurance, we have somebody who's already retired, who's changing their coverage?
No.
Who's retiring now and is an individual program. So when they retire, we have to put in a family because we don't know who.
The next teacher we hire, what they're going to get, so I budget for worst case scenario.
So this is a projected cost for a new employee?
Yes.
Who would replace a retiring employee?
Correct. Correct.
Thank you.
So the donations to the first draft budget, a lot of these are based on the BoSIE services that came out. We just got the service booklet, which has the new rates in there. So a lot of these deductions come from there. And you'll see that throughout this list here. And then we also took one of the programs and reduced them back down to their original current funding. So you'll see decreases here as well.
You'll see it through the high school codes, bringing them back to what they got the previous year.
Current funding.
Right.
You also have some big decreases in teacher salaries and that's due to retirements and that's in grade one to three. Teacher salaries for four and five, the grades four and five, and that's a retirement and that one individual is broken down between two codes. We also have a reduction in teacher salary rates seven through eight and that's two retirements in that code as well as a teacher retirement in grade nine through 12.
What was the, the first one, the first reduction?
It's $27,000.
Right, that's not retirement?
That's retirement, but her salary is broken down.
Oh, because it's broken down.
Yeah, she covered, it's broken down K through two and then three through five. And then for the middle school, one, one's a full-time employee in the middle school and the other one's a .3 in the middle school and a .7 in the high school. So that's why it's very, it's much bigger in the middle school.
You'll also see equipment in the high school, the Zed as reduction, and those are laptop carts and that's one we're going to look to during the purchases and the lease. And then the second one is redeploying the existing iPad cart we have here. So it'll just be pushing that out to one of the.
So the one in the English department is planned to be in the next lease and for the phys ed, just redeploying a getting older iPad cart that would fit their needs.
The next change you see is in our BoSIE services and that's for our CTI program. This is $7,000 there. Our high school students will be visiting the program at the, the leave is this week and once they visit it and have made the decisions, then we can adjust that based on the number that we have. There's also reduction in the guidance department from the original first draft and that's the Naviance program and that's the software program that was requested.
So we're not going to do that?
So that would just be differing, purchasing of Naviance for next year?
Correct.
They couldn't find an offset to make that possible?
Well, if they can, we can reinstate it.
Did they look for that?
I, we asked them to and so far we haven't. So we took it out originally. If he's, if they're able to find the money and switch it out, then we will, as we provide for it. But Joe felt as though we should take it out of the, out of the budget until he finds money he wants to reallocate.
The next line is the transportation field trips in high school and that's just being brought back to its current funding level.
Does that mean these are trips that didn't come back or what?
It's the same trips they have.
It's the same anymore, just not.
They bumped it.
The next large decrease is $61,000 and that's transportation for residents and that is just eliminating one of our bus routes.
We'll see about a second one yet. It hasn't been determined, so the one, the one is definite, that's gone. So we still have to look to see whether or not we can do another one.
The next reduction is in the teacher retirement system and that decrease is $63,500 and that is due to our rate, which is instead of 10,63, we see a decrease there and then we also have retirements that we can factor in there. Same thing with social security, the next line. And then workers' compensation, there's a reduction there of $35,000 and that is based on our rate decrease that was just handed out last week at the workers' comp meeting that Mr. Renan presented. And then we are reducing the amount that the original proposal on the first draft, the transfer to special aid funds, we're going to increase that 20%. So those are the deductions there. It's $424,120 and net for the additions and deletions, it's $386,420. And Tom will go over the remaining figures as they relate.
As we get back onto the revenue side and then give you the final bottom line. But before I, thank you, Christine.
Thank you, Christine.
Thank you very much.
That's great, thank you.
Well, I, I just want to get back to the workers' comp. Our, a couple of years ago, we established a workers' comp reserve of $175,000. Trying to remember, I can't remember, I think it was three, maybe, maybe four years ago we created that because the fund had an $11 million liability, which was quite a bit. We're on hook for quite a bit for, for that. So it's really great to report over the past couple of years, the, the fund has been doing really well. I'm going to go over to the funds I'm going here. Injuries have been pretty good, they haven't had significant injuries. And so we are now running a $2 million surplus. So we've gone from $11 million liability to a $2 million surplus. So we currently have $145,000 at our workers' comp reserve. I'm going to recommend when we meet with finance that we take those monies and put them into our fund balance so that, you know, because the money's not needed anymore for workers' comp in that specific reason. It's, it's been solved. So those monies can come back to the fund balance to help out. Wish I would have known about this earlier and gotten ready and put that into the fund balance. I found a few things about the fiscal stress that if we'd done things a couple ways a little bit differently, we wouldn't, I wouldn't say we wouldn't be on the list, we wouldn't be on the higher list. We would have probably been on a lower list or pretty close to coming off of that. Because we got, those particular monies don't get put into the unassigned because we had it assigned to workers' comp.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It could have gone into there and we had another thing with pre-pays, which we still argue with SED and our auditors with because all of a sudden they've reinterpreted something. So we're not going to prepay some things this year, which is going to help put the money into the fund balance, which will help us get off the, the list, which will be helpful. It's, now looking at everything, it's now starting to all make sense and we connect the dots. It's like, because on the books, we looked okay, not great, not great, but we looked okay, but then the state made us move things around where it said, whoa, whoa, it don't work. Pre-pays never came out of your fund balance. For some reason, now it does. And they did in the past couple of years, but all of a sudden this year, the state, all of a sudden did it. That was a part of the reason for that, that unassigned fund balance. It was $435,000, got switched, moved out by the state. State said, you got to move it here. Just because I paid it ahead of time? It's not due to July 1st, but you got to get it out ahead. All right, I'm not paying them until July 1st. So I've already talked to the companies involved, they're okay with it. So that's additional monies that will be in the fund balance and not taken out. So that will be helpful too. Learn some things, learn some things. Don't like this new, this new fund balance account, I like the old way, but that's what it is. But, all right, so let's get on to the rest of it here and what I want to talk about is on the, the tax cap side. So if you go to the last two pages in this section. No, no, you're in the right section, in here, in.
So additions to the leases.
All right, mine is in someplace else. Okay, so go to revenues, go to the tab called revenues.
What page is it? Oh, it's under a different tab.
Yeah, the different tab.
Yeah, yeah.
Are we going to the last page or?
Hold on a second.
He's working on it.
I didn't put the books together, so, sorry.
It's in there somewhere.
I, it's got to be somewhere.
I didn't get the book, so.
Where?
Third tab from the back?
No, no, it's the tax cap.
The levy limit?
The, yeah, the tax levy limit.
There you go. Where is it?
It'll be up in the front, it's right behind budget calendar.
Oh, tax levy limit.
We're good.
I have a different book than you guys.
Thank you.
I have a different book than you guys.
Thank you, all right.
All right, sorry about that. Okay. So there has been some adjustments. I'm calling it a draft still, but I'm pretty certain this is pretty much the final. So once again, really nothing changes on this first page. It's what we've gone before, we have a tax growth factor of .57, which is a little less than it typically is, but still a pretty good number. They net out the pilots and we had a allowable tax wealth grapher of 2%. Now, if we go on to the second page, there is a slight change here and this is under the capital local expenditures. So this number went up a little bit and basically what it is, is your debt service minus your building aid. So our building aid number came in and it was slightly, slightly lower than what was anticipated, about $2,000. So that did change our bottom line, it actually increased about an extra $2,000. So we went from $699,000 to $701,000. Still at 2.51, but it is a couple thousand dollars high. Okay. So any questions on the tax levy limit? Typically isn't on that, but.
Just pondering.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's.
Pondering.
It was real fun when this first came out, trying to figure out what it is, but, so, so now I want you to go to your tab that says revenues and we'll go over. And there was a couple slight adjustments to the revenue. We'll talk about some of these things. And then on the first page, there really isn't any changes except for the taxes, but we'll talk about that. there really isn't any changes except for the taxes, but we'll talk about that in a second. So we've got a little increase in our pilots, but nothing else is really changing. We did have a discussion today with Christine about interest and earnings. It's looking better. But until I actually see everything go, I, I'm a little hesitant to increase that. And if we get more monies from interest, great. It's just that much extra for the fund balance.
Right.
I really, really not, didn't want to change off of any of those things. So there's really no changes. It's, it's pretty standard as far as that's concerned. But if we go on to the next page, I had to reduce the state aid from the prior year. It really comes down to one area and that's BOSI's aid. Our BOSI's aid went down by 24,000. The overwhelming part of why it went down was is because we're not spending as much with BOSI's. That's a good thing. You don't spending the money, you're not getting your percentage back. So in some ways, that's, that's pretty good. Now, this has nothing to do with special ed students, has nothing to, you don't get any reimbursements from BOSI's aid. When they go to BOSI's, it's not student-based. This is more for the things that you purchased. So a decrease there. There was a slight decrease in the basic formula. Our combined wealth ratio went up. Surprise, surprise. We've gone up from 2.11 to 2.22. Yeah, so we went up 5%. We went up 5%. I didn't look too closely to see whether or not it was a property increase or whether it was an income increase. Or it could be that nothing increased. It's just the rest of the state got, the rest of the state got poor.
Yeah.
It, it could very well be that. I don't know. I haven't looked close enough at the calculation to say which, what is the reason. But whatever, there is a reason and we're, our aid ratio went up, meaning our aids go down. So it does have a factor into that. There's no doubt about it. I know before, I think we were at, with Mr. Cahill, I don't know, was that two weeks ago now?
Yes.
I guess that was a week and a half or so. And I gave him that spreadsheet and showed, you know, we had to spend the first, I think, 59,000 to get something. Well, now we have to spend the first 62,000 now. So it's like, and that was at BOSI's and we, we only have a couple of kids there now. We, we took four kids back already this year and that. There has been, in this whole budget process we just went through, there's no changes in the special ed area. I'll be meeting with, with Emily over the next week or by the end of the next time I present this, we will have gone through where she believes her program is going. So, so stay tuned for that because she thought she had some savings in a lot of ways, but I'm always worried about kids moving in and even some of the kids that are already here.
Right.
And, and, and just to be honest too, a lot of these things that are happening aren't even special ed students. They're normal students who have issues, anxiety. Anxiety seems to be the big one. School phobias. Very much they can learn. They just can't seem to come into the classroom. Unfortunately, sometimes what they have to do is put them in a, into a smaller classroom to get them adjusted and then start to bring them up so they can deal with a whole classroom of people. But, so we'll see more on that. So we had a decrease in the state aid of about 26,000 dollars and that may change. This is the governor's proposal. And I'm kind of hoping by the time we get to, to, to having to set our, our budget, by that time, we should have a completed budget. We heard Mr. Cahill try to say, you know, should be more money coming. Don't expect a lot. Don't expect much.
But this is worst case in terms of.
Yeah, to me, this is worst case. Definitely worst case scenario. But what I want to bring your attention to is the bottom portion of the inter-fund transfers. Now, we had earlier gone in the, the second line down, a 50-50 transfer, inter-fund transfer from debt service. That, our, our pot of money in that is shrinking. So I'm slowly trying to wean ourselves off of that. And I go back and take a look at and see whether or not I can get another year out of it. Dropping the appropriate fund balance by 100,000 dollars, I think that's a gotta do. But what I did change from the first draft is the next, the last line. And that's the appropriate fund balance from workers' comp. If I plan to, to eliminate that workers' comp reserve, to put it into the fund balance, it's not available there. So that would go away. But that puts money into the overall fund balance. So if we needed to, and something we can discuss in finance or at another time is, we could take that, since we're putting 145,000 dollars additional into that fund balance this year, do we want to use 30,000 of that to just sort of, so it's there, but it's, it's, it's not? So something to consider as we go along in this process. But we get to the bottom line. We're still, I just want to make sure they're all on the same page. I got 891, 891. So we're still a little over 900,000 dollars.
Under.
Not under, sorry, sorry. Over, over the tax cap. And, you know, that's still a big number. There's still a few things out there that could help bring it down. Health insurance. I did speak with some people who are involved with the negotiations with Blue Cross, Blue Shield. They definitely said I could go down to eight right now. Whether it gets below eight is another question because what they're trying to stabilize is at 8%. So we don't get like 2%, and then 16%, like 16% last year was just outrageous. If we could have done two years at eight, we'd all be happy. So that's what they want to do. They might be able to bring it down a little bit further, but they really want to set 8% because the average over the past 10 years has been 7%. So they want to go with eight. They want to reduce themselves off of the subsidy. Because one of the things that may happen, we won't know until this budget process is done. We may actually get a DEHIC holiday. And you say, what's a DEHIC holiday?
It is Christmas.
It is Christmas. It actually happens in December. If we have a certain amount of fund balance at DEHIC at the end of this year.
What's a DEHIC?
Oh, oh, sorry. DEHIC is our health insurance consortium. It's Duchess Educational Health Insurance Consortium at DEHIC. Because it started as a Duchess product only. It's now expanded across the river and things of that nature. So we're 26 school districts now, but at the time, it was just Duchess. If at the end of the year, I think it's in May, a decision is made, looking at the fund balance, and there's some whole formula with it. If your fund balance is XYZ, then what happens if it's above that, and it could possibly, because we're having a very good year so far at DEHIC, way better than anybody ever anticipated, that if the fund balance is at a certain level, we don't not pay our December premium. We get to keep the money. We don't pay it to them. It's our way of recouping that excess fund balance. So we're hoping, I'm hoping.
How much would that be?
I'm just going to use a figure, 300,000. So it's a, it's a big chunk.
That's a chunk.
But I won't know until the budget is done. So you budget for this anyways. It's just a matter of whether or not you actually, you know, have to pay that next December. But we'll, we'll know, I think it'll probably right around the time of the budget vote. I'd have to take a look at the account. I think we might know the next day, actually. Because we meet the third Wednesday of the month and since we're voting on the third Tuesday of the month, I may not know it's the day after. But it won't ha, it should have no effect then, I think, because the budget will be the budget. It just, it will help us out tremendously the following year. It was 300,000 dollars that we don't have to dole out, which is, which is very good. Now, just to let you know where we're at right now. Christine and I are putting together a list of all the non-mandated items. We're starting to put that whole list together. It's extensive. The original list was 12 million dollars. So I don't know what it currently is because I haven't put today's numbers against it. These are numbers that were eight years ago. Some of those things have been eliminated, but also some things have been added since we've done. So it's like the school resource officer. We didn't have that program eight, nine years ago when we originally put the list together. So it's not mandated. So we're going to put it on the list. But I'm not saying get rid of it or anything, but it's, we want to put all the non-mandated stuff on there. So what we're going to be doing over the next couple of weeks is putting those lists together. And then once they're together, then you'll be able to see the entire list of everything and what costs are associated with it. And then the administrators will go back to their offices to take a look and have some, some hard conversations. Because as we look at this, there's no way we're going to close that gap of 900,000 without some personnel decisions. Not but it, it's unfortunate. But there'll be more to come. I know me and Joe had a long time meeting. We have met with, with each of the building principals when we got all the, not all of them. There was only three teacher retirements and so far we received one. Any retirement, we've gone to each of the principals and Sheldon to discuss with them whether or not those positions need to actually be replaced. So they're coming up with plans to see how it can be done with not replacing the people who retire. Whether or not it can be accomplished or not, I don't know. That, that's something that the principals are working on, looking at their master schedules and just seeing whether or not it can be. And we, we think some of them, we, we know of one that we don't think is going to be replaced. But we're waiting for the principals to come back to talk to us about what the effect will be. Because no matter what, it's fewer choices, fewer courses that will be taught and what is that impact? So we want to know those things before we make a final decision.
And the, and the budget, the draft of the budget you've just presented to us tonight, of course, does reflect the notion of a replacement.
Yes, yes, yes. At all these, it is.
At current staffing levels.
Current staffing levels. What I basically did in a big portion of the deductions this year, or reductions in this budget, was the breakage.
Right.
Replacing the outgoing retiree and bringing somebody in as a step four masters. Okay? And that can change. That's kind of about the average, you know, but some things happen, you know. And I'm just going to use an example. Last year, we had a guidance counselor who retired. I put it in for some master step four. We ended up hiring somebody with quite a bit of experience. I think it was master step nine. So all right, I'm a little under budget there. But then again, there is times when I, I get a, somebody fresh out of school, a bachelor step one, where, but there are savings there, you know. So it, it depends. It kind of evens itself out over the year. So, so questions and I know you have concerns, but.
Diane?
Just to recap a second. So besides any cuts, the other numbers where you are waiting for state aid and changes to the health insurance, correct?
Number of kids in CTI.
Oh, right.
That, that's one. And then looking at the special ed again. Because the first time we sat down with Emma, Ms. Davison, she indicated that she thought that a couple of, of the students would need their one-to-one aids. Was looking at possibly taking some students who are currently placed outside the district and bringing them back in to the district, adding them to the self-contained classroom over a chancellor. And also I think they're looking to bring one of the kids back here to the high school. This is a start ninth grade who was, who was with us originally left and he's ready to come back, which is, which is great to hear, which is great. And with those things possibly is a reduction in transportation. If I don't have to travel to one place where I have one kid on it, because he's coming to school here. He's going to come in on the home to school runs. That, that's an elimination of some of the transportation.
It's pretty safe to say any of those things, it's not.
It's not getting out of the nine, it's not going to come up to 900,000.
Any other questions, Tom or Christine? Okay, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I do have one question. So Tom, when do you think the third draft will be pulled together? When are you going to know more and be able to make more recommendations?
I think the biggest thing, and I think I'll have one, two weeks from now. And that is, I'm just going to have to double check with Dr. Davenport as to when that CTI trip is. I think it, I think it was this week. So I can't say for sure exactly what it is. So, and he said within a week, they have to make the decision. So if they're going this week, I'll kind of know where, what the number should be. Yes?
It's actually tomorrow.
Oh, it's tomorrow. Okay.
Tomorrow. And, and what's the window of time for the student to come in?
I think they said they wanted one week or something like that.
Oh, okay.
They wanted to know within a week whether or not they wanted to be a part of the program. And then I'll be meeting with Ms. Davison to, to take a look at the special ed. Those are the really the two big things that I think really need to get out of the way. And then maybe by that time, Mr. Phelan will have a recommendation whether or not we need to replace the retirees. So maybe that will do. It may not affect the budget. I think he may want to speak to you first as to yes or no. But at least that will be on the table to, to discuss about what the implications are of not replacing the retiring.
I just, I'm, I just want to signal to all members of the board that some questions have come to us both last year and this year around the format of our budget workshop. And there's a very kind of set purpose to the budget workshop. I understand that it's been there in the way that it is for very particular reasons. But at the same time, to open the question, if not tonight, perhaps at our next meeting, if finance could talk about this and we could talk about it in different committees, maybe communications could also discuss this about how we can provide meaningful opportunities for community engagement with the budget building process. And I don't know if anyone has any thoughts now about how we might construct. Because it's mid-February, we do have a little bit of time, not a great deal of time. So I do want to put it out on the table that we have had questions, helpful, constructive questions forwarded to us about how best to engage our community. Do you have any ideas about this?
Well, I don't know. I haven't really been able to come up with any way that our board budget workshop should change. But I do feel like, we talked about this last year too, when all of those questions came up, that it's, it really is, you know, on us to get the word out. And it is the community's right to be informed about the budget and what we're looking at. And can't wait until the budget workshop for people to wake up and say, oh my God, you can't do this. Wait, how come, why can't you go find something else to cut? We have to be really open and honest and project out rather than wait for people to find it buried in the website, what we're talking about. Because, you know, we also need to frame the conversation. If a teacher is going to have to be cut from full-time to part-time, there's a reason for that. And nine times out of 10, it's going to be because we just don't have the kids to teach. It's not because we're trying to cut, you know, whatever kind of program for kids. It's just because you can't fill the classrooms. So I think it's really important that our communication is very strategic and pointed and transparent. So that people don't feel like we haven't been doing our due diligence, which we all know is not the case.
See, it's hard to do personnel in a meeting. It really is. It, it's difficult, but.
No, yeah, no, absolutely. We certainly can't. But I think it's, it's okay for us to say we're looking at personnel options, though we're not looking at canceling, you know, half of the.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of them, you know, some of our ideas and thoughts, of course, were, you know, you offer some things every other year instead of every year. No, every kid will have the opportunity to take the class. It's just going to happen in your junior year or your senior year, not happening both of those years.
Right. So it's important then for guidance to be part of that conversation.
Of the students also knowing this so that they can plan.
Plan accordingly. Diane?
Yeah, I also don't necessarily have ideas on how it can change. And I think there was this conception last year from the public of what the board workshop is about. Some people thought that was the first time we were looking at cuts or we were talking about. You know, we've been talking about the budget already for months at this point. The community usually gets involved when they start hearing about cuts or budget workshop. And we're thinking that is generally our opportunity, not our last opportunity, but one of our last to have all the administrators and all the people ask those questions. You know, how that format can change is difficult because the public doesn't always have some of the information that we have. We can develop, we can't, but it's like that. So we do have to talk about a way that people can be more involved, that it wants to be involved. Still a small percentage of people are asking to be involved, but we can do that. asking involved, but we can do that.
I, yeah, and also, I mean, we'll be hearing a report from the communications committee tonight about thinking about how we communicate with our community early enough with budget information. I would be interested in exploring methods. I completely understand the idea that the budget workshop really is about this board being informed by all the administrators about the rankings and prioritizations they're giving us. It's very important information to help guide us. If there's some way we could facilitate at least trying to get questions answered by members of the community, if there could be multiple ways of forwarding questions maybe in advance, we might be able to collect that information before the day of the workshop so that people could be prepared to answer and think through those concerns. So maybe communications might be able to think about some innovative strategy for soliciting that community questioning and input. At least then we would all be able to get prepared for the workshop to speak to those questions and concerns. Because in many ways, it is a kind of a presentation format rather than a, you know, a decision-making or exploratory format. Yep?
Well, there's the tab on the website and with the school messenger, maybe let's everybody in the community that, there's a tab on the website. If you have a question about the budget, you know, now is the time to click the tab.
Yeah.
Right.
Not Rhinebeck, Mom's and Dad's.
Not yet, yeah.
Which I think people turn to because they.
Not Rhinebeck. And you could even put that in the message. It's like, we know you're talking on the Facebook page, but you need to click on this tab.
No offense, Rhinebeck, Mom's and Dad's.
At this moment. You know, it's a first step. It's a first step to kind of wake everybody up. They'll, you know.
Activate the tab.
Activate. They'll see it on their phones. They'll see it.
Well, just one thing. School Messenger only goes out to student families. It does not go out to the entire community.
True.
But the district button is for anybody who hits the website.
Oh, certainly, yeah. You got to go to the website. So I'd like to see if there's some way, I think the town has a way of messaging. I don't know if we can give the message to them so that they can blast it out to, but it's only going to go to the Rhinebeck community. It's not going to go to Clinton and that, but at least it's going to get a spread. It'll get out further.
Yeah. Diane will just have to ride through the streets of Clinton. The town prior. Hear ye, hear ye.
Hear ye, hear ye. Budget cuts, hey.
You need to know this.
But that's a good idea. If you can contact the town as well and the village.
And through our collaboration, we might be able to really work in partnership to do that. Yeah, so I think this getting the word out is really, really important right now.
Yeah, it is important. It's important that people, I mean, you know, it's February 13th, but it's pretty obvious that there's people wanting to be cuts made of some type. So, you know, people shouldn't wait until April or March to, you know, that.
Right.
Problems.
Right. Okay, well, I did want to raise that and I hope we can keep discussing it and make communications, when you meet again, your meeting very soon-ish.
Uh, March.
Another week or two.
Okay.
Okay. So, thank you.
Yeah, it's not much ahead of the budget workshop, so. We'll have to do some communicating.
All right, well, we're going to have to communicate, not in that meeting.
If I remember, we have two board meetings. We have the second one in February and I believe March 6th, I think it's the first week.
Oh, yeah, but that's a little late to be.
No, it is the last week, but we have two meetings before that budget workshop, so.
And I really think that having the opportunity to communicate priorities, concerns, questions in a dynamic way, so it isn't just the morning of the thing and, you know, we're just saying the things we prepared. We're not really capable of responding in real time to those questions, I think, in the budget workshop format. But we could prepare or take on board the questions if we got them in advance, so.
Yeah, I think making people aware of where the information is in advance, budget information, and where they can go to get that information explained, because it's not necessarily self-evident to be able to read. It's just not easy to read. And then also communicating what, I mean, I had a misunderstanding last year as a community member about what a budget workshop meant. That was the first one I went to. And I thought workshop sounded like.
Workshop.
Not opportunity for the public to see transparency, you know, for a board process. And so I think part of it is managing, you know, is letting people know what the goal is, what the board workshop is for. And so getting the information out for people to process and learn about ahead of time and then come up with their questions and then ask us their questions ahead of time so that we can respond to them, you know, not on the spot.
Right.
But I almost wish we could change the name.
Well, yeah.
You know, and or maybe have like, have another board meeting in between, say, call that a.
Workshop.
You know, so that more people come to a board meeting.
Evening workshop.
Ridiculous.
We have a crowd out there tonight.
We got to think outside the.
We have a crowd.
I'm just thinking, like, to have, not when we're presenting, they're like, okay, here's what, you know.
Yeah, I think that's a very good.
Here's final product, but like, you want to have input, come in now. Tell us what you hear about now. Use the Ask the District, come to board meeting, use the public.
Comment.
Comment period. Contact us by email, you know.
Yeah.
Maybe we have another coffee.
Well, that's the other question.
Maybe not a workshop, but maybe we have a coffee period morning and evening where it's like, let's talk about the budget.
Well enough before the workshop.
Which we had talked about in communications earlier this year, that the winter, early spring one was going to be about the budget. So I think maybe we should.
Get that on the calendar.
Yeah, let's definitely do that right away. Okay. All right. I think we have a sort of plan of how to begin to get this news out now. Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. Thank you for bearing with me to ask that. All right, so let's go on to our board committee reports. Audit. Wait, wait a minute. I'm sorry. That was just too much. That transition was very quick.
That's a very short committee. We conducted a review of the review of external audit and we spent a couple hours reviewing the four months, but that's.
Questions for audit.
Do you have a sense of when you're going to do an auditing firm?
Stay tuned.
Stay tuned.
Stay tuned.
Within the next couple of weeks. I'm doing some reference checks right now.
So you got some good candidates.
Got two and concentrating.
Okay.
Thank you, Diane. Curriculum, curriculum.
We do so much.
Random quote, I know what foot.
All right, so nice lead-in for curriculum. So we talked about a whole bunch of things. We started off asking about college and careers, sort of a perennial question about why, what is it for, what do we do? And in Marvin's research, he's come to the conclusion that there really has never been an articulated curriculum for college and careers one and two. Ms. Usowitz, over last summer, did draft college and careers one to develop awareness of career and life choices for kids beyond high school and college. And in order to teach college and careers one, you actually have to have a certified family and consumer sciences teacher, which she is. College and careers two has traditionally focused on college prep and writing your college essay and recruiter's visits and SAT and ACT prep. And so the committee sorts, you know, this is all great, but college and careers came into existence because of the community service requirement that the board put in place 20 years ago. So is there, you know, can't there be a more clear structure and function for this class? Can there be a stronger tie between that class and the service that we all want to preserve as part of our graduation requirements? So, you know, because there are kids that can opt out of it so that they can clear up their schedule for something else, but what do they do to satisfy the graduation requirement? So we need some more information about that. Marvin is sort of, you know, thinking that this might be an appropriate time, especially considering our changes in the guidance office for a more articulated curriculum and better understanding of what we're trying to get out of this course for kids. He also gave us a math curriculum update for chancellor. And rather than developing curriculum as we did with ELA, it's become clear that really what the chancellor faculty wants is to find a math program that they can buy. So they're doing a textbook acquisition project and are calling in all kinds of folks that are the sellers of math curriculum and they're going to interview all those products and make recommendations. And once they've sort of honed in on one that they like, they're going to look at it compared to the new standards and then bring in our middle school teachers to see how the bridge from elementary to middle school works because there's been a little bit of a disconnect there. And then we asked Marvin to tell us a little bit about the changes in the health and wellness curriculum requirements from SED, how there is a mental health component now. And he was happy to report that we do have the mental health components in our curriculum, but he's waiting for guidance from SED on what needs to be changed. The health and wellness committee, pupil personnel and administrators had a screening of a movie called Angst, which is about anxiety and anxiety disorders. It was not a feel-good movie, but it's an important movie and they're working out different ways of being able to bring it on board so that the conversation can continue about anxiety and those kinds of things. And as of November, the next parent academy is going to have Bonnie St. John speaking to parents and students about microresiliency. Thank you.
Thanks.
So just to be clear, we're not looking at talking about removing.
No, no, no.
We're just trying to understand like how it has to tie into a class. So that's not clear.
Well, it has to tie into a class.
Like any class or a class about, like, that's not, that part's not clear.
Well, that's the part that's not really clear because, you know, there are certain English classes that work on development of college essay, which is also supposed to be part of college and careers. There are other civic engagement components that could be taught perhaps in social studies curriculum because there's a whole civics vein in the new social studies standard. So we're trying to sort of figure out, do we need college and careers the way it's considered?
And I'm considering, since this was 20 years ago, have many schools had this kind of requirement of community service, if that is still a requirement, we're looking to see if that, if it can just be a standalone requirement since it's been 20 years.
We did ask that. And it was, it's a, I think I put it in the minutes, it's SED's, they determined it by decision. It's not education law that says we have to tie community service to a class, but it's, if you're going to require kids to do community service, there has to be a tie-in with a curricular component.
I guess I just wonder, a decision like that, like since it's been 20 years, that's, you know, things may change.
They may have. I'm guessing probably not, but.
But it's well worth it, I think.
Yeah, but so Marvin's going to start doing this research.
I mean, that being said, I think that generally this is a good class, you know, it'd be nice, I guess, for some students, if they, you know, if it wasn't mandatory to take it for that requirement. So it could be nice to have.
It's kind of a question, though. If you can opt out, how are you getting credit for the community service if it's not tied into the class that you've opted out of? Right? So there must be a way of doing it without it being tied to a class.
Unless, unless when you opt out, you're doing a special project. And neither Joe nor Marvin were clear about what kids have to do to satisfy the requirement. So they need to do some more research.
So this committee will follow up.
We will.
Next one.
Yeah.
Other questions? Curriculum? Okay, personnel.
It's awesome. The first meeting, February 5th, was just our first bargaining session with our anti-retirement. In that, we exchanged proposals and set up plans. So that was the first meeting. Our second meeting, February 8th, was a meeting. We looked at staffing in all three buildings, we looked at retirements. Class side was in those buildings. We discussed in hospital policies and things like that.
Questions for personnel? Okay, random collaboration.
Okay, so Joe and I met with Mayor Bassett and Supervisor Spindia on February 6th. And the mayor and supervisor informed us that the village and town have jointly hired a new emergency response coordinator who was replacing the former coordinator who passed away over the summer. And so they're working together to formulate, you know, the coordinator's role and duties. And they are looking to refine the village and town emergency plan. We reminded the mayor and supervisor that the high school will have a generator once the construction project is complete. And that was one of the reasons for the generator is to provide shelter for community residents in the event of an emergency. The village and town are also working on their communication plan and they're looking for a messaging system similar to what we have in school messenger to communicate with residents in an emergency, to get the word out about whatever needs to be put out to the residents. So as we discussed earlier, you know, they have some communication systems. They do have an email system, but they don't have an emergency system. So the school has an evacuation plan and it's been revised, I guess, in the process of being revised recently. And the plan calls for, in the event of evacuation of the schools, that students could be moved to the Good Shepherd Parish Hall, the Brogan Center, or the village, or town hall, or some combination of those. And we are in the process of coming out, working toward an agreement with the town and village just to formalize the agreement in the event of an emergency and what the process would be to move students to those facilities. So the mayor and supervisor indicated that they're on board with that, but it's just a matter of, you know, formalizing the plan in writing. The mayor and supervisor asked us about the recent headlines about the school district being in fiscal stress, so we explained to them what it means to be in fiscal stress and so communicated about that. And our next meeting is April 10th.
Any questions for collaboration?
I will just add the information explaining precisely what the factors are that lead the controller to make a designation about fiscal stress or moderate fiscal stress has been published on the district website. It's available for all people who want to kind of get into understanding precisely what those designations mean. And I encourage everyone to refer people with questions to that, to that statement.
Communications. So, let's see. Jacqueline had a very informative phone conversation with communications consultant Mary Beth Cale, who is an alum of the RCSD. Mary Beth strongly suggested that we use human stories from our school, focusing on successful, the interesting and the feel-good alumni stories. For example, Kathy Dobson, an MIT graduate who's returned to our district to raise her family. Sean O'Brien showing an. Sean O'Brien showing an indie film at Upstate Films. A good resource for these stories would be Robert Haywood. And these feel-good stories could be used in the budget newsletter, the brochure, our website, and sent out as press releases. And if they get picked up, then they'll show up in Google searches. One aspect that keeps coming up is the benefit of having a small school district. Mary Beth Cale mentioned this as well, that the RCSD provides opportunities for all students to participate in any activity they choose. We don't turn kids away from our sports teams, from theater productions. Everybody gets to participate. Parents have expressed that our school district provides private school quality and a public school, and how can we boil down that message and create perhaps a tagline? That could be used for the brochure that we have been putting together. Laura and Deirdre have put together a rough draft of our brochure. They're pulling quotes from the parent survey emphasizing the benefits of having a small school with a private school feel. They are backing up opinions with data such as graduation rates and using photos from buildings to demonstrate the quality of education that our school district provides, ranging from volunteer days to Madagascar days to the CLS children with the pumpkins and the fire station, visitation day. Layout's a little tricky, and we're hoping to find someone with experience to help volunteer. And if we can't find a volunteer, Jaclyn has said that she could do the layout. But again, creating a tagline would be helpful. Facebook, Steve is meeting with Stephen Dickens, who helped us tremendously setting up Hootsuite for the Playground Dan and campaign. They will also be, or Steve will also be helping with the basic setup, and it's almost ready to launch. The budget newsletter, Steve showed us a rough draft of the budget newsletter designed with the InDesign program. We don't have a copy, but the blue band, which will be purple for the final draft, highlights information from our district. Questions if we need the pie charts and graphics that we had in last year's brochure, budget newsletter versus the actual numbers. The Board of Education candidates page. Sitting board members need to make an announcement if they are running or not and give the community time to react. Our next meeting is March 8th. And I also just, we didn't discuss this, but, so does everybody have any questions? I have a comment.
She's a comment as well as a question.
Well, oh, I'm sorry.
Move right into your comment.
Okay. That perhaps with the brochure, we also mention how helpful the Rhinebeck Science Foundation has been in providing opportunities along with the BTSO and other, any other foundations that have been helping us out. But the Science Foundation most definitely has been pulling a lot of weight for us over the years. And it would be attractive.
Yeah. Sounds good. Yeah. Oh, wait, it's to her, isn't it?
Uh, necessarily, just the budget newsletter and just, it just reminded me that we typically mail that out pretty much timed right before budget vote, and it just reminds me that we seem to have an issue with our bulk mailing in Clinton.
Ooh.
And that we might need to nail those out sooner or a different way if we want them to get there because our postcards never deliver to Clinton.
Yeah, that's right.
That's right. Budget newsletter, I think, was late last year getting to one, so just want to keep that in mind, that you can either have a first class or you have to do it, you have to do something earlier.
And I think it is, it's, it's, anything that goes through the Millbrook Post Office isn't getting out like it is from the other ones. And theoretically, they're, they have the opportunity to slow that down. I don't know why they do it. I don't know why. Nobody else does it. I think it's, I'd rather you go through the bulk mailing process, and that's, then you wouldn't, no way have that out in time. I think what it is, I think we are going to just have to put first-class postage on those. So, it'll be a little bit more, but we know it will get to them.
Yes. They have the right to receive the information.
As the town cryer, just get out and shout it out.
It's no good to get it. It's a waste if they get it after the vote, so.
Do we know if Clinton is the only area affected with our mailing?
Far as we know.
We've got Mylan, we've got other.
Never heard anything about Mylan or, I mean, Reddick only has a couple residents, so it's not humongous. But I haven't, that's the only place I've heard we've had problems, is in Clinton for those that are going through the Millbrook Post Office. I don't know if all of Clinton goes through the Millbrook Post Office, but I know I take the bag down there. It's not humongous compared to the other ones.
Many quarters mailing goes through there.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think all of Clinton goes through there.
Right, any of its town Clinton, but not Clinton goes through there.
Yeah, I think it goes through someplace else. So, it's not like we're dealing with 1,000. I think there's like maybe 250. So, we may just have to.
So, communications folks will be sure to try and be ready with it.
I mean, I, yeah.
In enough time, right?
I meant with that.
You're still never.
It's out there somewhere.
Sitting on the floor in the Millbrook Post Office.
You'll get it in five years when you find it in the back corner. Oh, look at this. You better get this out.
So, moving the agenda, I see that we have a placeholder here for Duchess Bocie's Board nominations and election. I think this provides us with an opportunity to put forward nominations. Is there any such nomination?
If you take a look at it, the deadline is March 9th, so we only have two more board meetings between these two. So, if someone wanted to put their name in the hat, we have to do it pretty quickly.
Yes.
I don't remember how often. They meet only once a month. Usually, I think, is like a 5:00 start time. It's much earlier than what we do.
That's a great beginning, actually.
So, it's, it's nowhere to the same commitment you would have as this, as a board member here. It's a lot different over there. I don't know if, the best thing to do, if you're thinking about it, take a look at the Duchess Bocie's Board minutes. You can really, take a look at that. Because we do put them in here, take a look at that. You can see what they go through. It's nowhere like what they do here with the presentations and getting into the nitty-gritty of everything. It's a little bit different. It's more of a kind of a governing type of, of, of board.
So, for members of our board who may be interested, should they seek counsel from you and/or Joe to get more information prior to our next board meeting?
Yeah, yeah, if somebody wants to, please reach out to me or Joe, and we'll try to answer your questions. And if I remember correctly, I don't see it here. I don't think you need to be an actual board member on a board.
No, 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 and we can reach out to any others in the community. Exactly.
Yeah, you should just be a community resident if that's.
So, for anyone watching or any members of the audience who are interested, just let us know.
Oh, shucks, I live across the river. I can see you, Christine. There, you might have jumped right on that. Ah, just not living in Duchess County.
So, we'll return to this, to this agenda item at our next meeting. Good news. Yes, Laura?
Take a Stand project, which is hanging in the hallway down by the gym in the auditorium, I highly recommend. It is remarkable every year, and they just keep getting better. It's really cool, really, really cool.
And we're certainly appreciative of the opportunity to get to view the students' artwork prior to our board meeting, and it's, it should be there for a while, correct? A little while? Two days?
Weeks.
Two weeks, two weeks, for those who have not yet seen it. Other good news.
No one else, I have one.
Yes, please.
Right. You'll be very happy to see Joe back here next time. That's good news from my perspective.
Joe is in Nicaragua with the Interact Student Group as a chaperone, as he has done in past years. He's, he's serving his community.
He's doing his community service now.
That's right.
He didn't take the course, though.
Yes, I am.
The voting is still on for the Chancellor of Playground. I think there's two more days.
Two more days.
Everyone's getting a little tired of voting, but keep voting. Two more days.
Yes. And it's very good news to see the tremendous outpouring of support from our community businesses, from our families, the incredible media campaign that we've had supported by Mr. Dickens and our colleagues here in the district. It's been great. There are good news. I have two good news things. One is that there was an amazing, we're going to hear about it later on tonight when we approve this by board action, but an amazing science fair that took place at Bard College with students from Redhook and Rhinebeck. And again, that was supported by the generosity of the Rhinebeck Science Foundation. Really extraordinary work by those young people who, you know, are learning what it is to actually prepare for and compete in a science fair and develop aspirations to go beyond, so that's fantastic to see. And the other piece of good news is that Rhinebeck was named a reward school by the state for the fifth consecutive year. Information about that is on the board website as well. I think one of the things to really highlight about that accolade is not only does that mean students are achieving at a high level or continuing, the school's continuing to improve in terms of student achievement, but also it means there are no large gaps between different parts of the student population. You could have some segment of your student population doing very well and others not, and we don't see that kind of discrepancy in our district, and I think it's cause for real celebration. No questions? Okay. Old business. Public comment?
Okay, now the parent had on, not ours. I think it's an excellent idea to consider having the budget workshop as a coffee or a more of an interactive participation because I went, I've been gone for years, and I have not seen a robust turnout like I did last year. And there were some excellent points that were brought up, but they're brought up very late, whether you can consider them or you can't consider them, or, you know, their personnel. But it does give the perception of, if you can, when you're sitting here, you can't really ask questions, right? You can comment. But if it's in a coffee, you know, somebody listens to you, and they can say, well, I can get back to you, or this is why we can't do it, and it may, and you don't know what ideas you'll get from the community that you can engage with ahead of time. I think it would probably be less frustrating for the people who come, and they, right, there's, people just don't know how, what to expect because they don't come to the board meetings. And again, you can't really have dialogue in this format. So, I think it's, it's a fabulous idea. How you get out the word is, good luck to you. Because there were, there were at least eight to 10 people who had, you know, really great ideas, it's just it's kind of late at that point. So, excellent.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes?
Hi, I'm Pat Sexton with the Education Network for Teachers and Artists, and I wanted to thank you who were able to make it today to see the Taking a Stand program. It's our fifth anniversary with DK's eighth grade. We've got six programs currently running in the Rhinebeck schools. And as you develop the budget, I have concerns about what's going to happen with Arts and Ed Committee and teaching core subjects through the arts, which is what we do, is we engage with the core subjects and teach creative thinking and problem-solving through that. So, I welcome any conversation that you'd like to have about what we do and why we're doing it and why it should be supported in the budget and how we can explore other ways to engage public funding and grant writing and things together in order to bring those resources in from other places because I know it's a tough situation here, but I'm also concerned about the quality of the schools and the perception of why you moved to Rhinebeck and why you're in the schools here. So, thank you so much for your support. I just totally appreciate it. It was a great show, and always a pleasure to work with these kids and to see them taking what they know and turning it into creative expressions and empowering them to let us know what they're thinking. Because this project in particular really asks you to be brave and to pick something that can be really controversial and really get conversations going with your peers that can be uncomfortable, but that they also learn to take the stand and stand up for what they believe. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Other. Okay, no other. Laura, are you just holding your glasses or is that an other?
I'm sorry, I'm writing.
Glasses looked a little, they looked a little like they might.
Very good to say none in an auction, are you just?
Yeah, I know, right? I'll raise them. All right, well, then let's move on to our action items. May I ask if there are any provisions in the consent agenda that you wish to see removed? Seeing none. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So, moved.
Second.
All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to accept grant awards from the Rhinebeck Science Foundation in support of funding for the following grants as stipulated. The Redhook Rhinebeck Science Fair prizes, as submitted by Ms. Kristen Kogle in the amount of $100, and Parent Academy presentation on resilience for anxious students, as submitted by David Aristok and the Rhinebeck Health and Wellness Committee in the amount of $1,432.
So, moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let us say again, we are extremely grateful for this generous support for these two important programs. All those in favor? We are unanimously in support. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve the list of additional emergency conditional substitute non-instructional staff for the 2017-18 school year?
So, moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve the appointment of additional enrichment program advisors for Chancellor Livingston Elementary School for the 2017-18 school year?
So, moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve a leave request under the Family and Medical Leave Act from Susan St. Clair to commence on February 7th, 2018, with such leave to be taken as paid medical leave through the period of disability as certified by a physician in writing, to the extent of her accrued sick leave and thereafter, such leave to be taken as unpaid medical leave through on or about March 21st, 2018.
So, moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to accept the resignation of Nancy Abel, Buckley Middle School English Language Arts teacher, for the purpose of retirement as stated effective the close of business on June 30th, 2018.
So, moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to accept the resignation of Kevin Kip, Maintenance Worker for the Purpose of Retirement as stated effective the close of business June 29th, 2018.
So, moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to accept the resignation of Grace Lilicky, Buckley Middle School, Rhinebeck High School Vocal Music Teacher, for the Purpose of Retirement as stated effective the close of business on June 30th, 2018.
So, moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
It's just a thank you to Nancy Abel, Kevin Kip, and Grace Lilicky for their years of service.
For their many years of distinguished service, indeed. Thank you. All those in favor? That is unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve additional mentors for the 2017-18 school year?
So, moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve additional mentors for the 2017-18 school year?
So, moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to correct the appointment of Catherine Mustello as follows. To the full-time position of Typist 1, 10 months, assigned to the RHS BMS Attendance Office effective January 10th, 2018, a reassignment from the combined position of Typist 1 School Monitor, 10 months, at a salary of Step 11, $38,500, in accordance with the ante-salary schedule for 2017-18, with a 26-week probationary period.
So, moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve additional spring coaches for the 2017-18 additional spring coaches for the 2017-18 school year? Varsity track, distance and hurdles, Chris Snead, $4,032. Varsity track, sprinting and jumping, Justin Randall, $4,032. Varsity track, throwing and pole vault, to be determined, $4,032. Modified track, distance and throwing, to be determined, $2,478. Modified track, sprinting and jumping, Mark Berg, $2,478. Tennis, Dave Jutton, $2,944. Varsity baseball, George Nicolatos, $3,886. Assistant baseball volunteer, Jeff Kazins, volunteer. Junior varsity baseball, to be determined, $2,837. Modified baseball, Mike DiNatale, $2,308. Varsity softball, Scott Styerson, $3,886. Volunteer assistant softball, Dave Booze, volunteer. Junior varsity softball, to be determined, $2,837. Modified softball, Dave Erstach, $2,365. Girls varsity crew, Ralph Bosco, $4,532. Boys varsity crew, Casey Hetty, $4,532. Novice crew, to be determined, $3,136. Varsity lacrosse, Justin Albertson, $3,886.
So moved.
Second. That was him taking it all in.
Didn't hear it.
Yeah. Any discussion other than such unhelpful questions? I would like to thank the volunteer coaches who are supporting our interscholastic athletic competition and sports teams. All those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous, that very long motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of additional advisors for Rhinebeck High School for the 2017-18 school year, see attached.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? That is unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the following change in computer teacher hours for Allison Vacarino, an increase from .4 FTE to 1 FTE effective February 14th, 2018, to on or about March 21st, 2018, at the pleasure of the board, at the rate of Step 10 plus 5, $76,945 prorated, in accordance with the RTA salary schedule for the 2016-17 school year. Ms. Vacarino will cover all of Ms. St. Clair's assignments during her absence.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? That is unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the probationary civil service appointment of Angelica Resulow at 5.75 hours per diem as food service helper, with a 26-week probationary period effective February 14th, 2018.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Yes.
Can I move to table this?
Absolutely. There's been a move to table, all those in favor? That motion has been tabled. And may I have a motion to move into executive session to discuss compensation for non-unit employees?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? Great. That is unanimous, we're moving into executive session.